I'm calling the September 16th meeting of the zoning board's appeal. The order, may we have a roll call, please?
Kevin, you're muted. I don't know if you.
Okay, yes, that would help to unmute. Okay, Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Cho is excused. Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Roche?
Here.
Ms. Yuckman?
Here.
Mr. Warmbrun?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here, we have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right. Has everyone received the minutes of our August 19th meeting?
Yes.
And reviewed them?
No.
I know, I didn't get any mailings at all, so was that in the?
No, I didn't.
Mail this stuff out to us?
I believe.
It was emailed, yes.
I received the email on September 11th. I don't know if they were mailed or not.
Did you read the minutes?
Looked at the minutes.
I went through them and they looked good to me.
I read them, but.
All right, then at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the meetings, the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded, I believe we can just do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
No, sorry Harvey, we have to do, we have to do everything by roll.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I appreciate the efficiency.
All right, at this time, then, we'll have a roll call for the approval of the August 19th minutes.
Okay, Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Ms. Yuckman?
Yes.
Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes, those minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
Cat, did we have any? No, we did not have any communications.
Communications.
Any continued public hearings?
Nope.
All right, then at this time, we are ready for new public hearings, starting with ZBA 2020-major-04. A request by Stowe Real Estate Holdings LLC for a major variance to allow two commercial wall signs in a zoning district that does not allow commercial wall signs at 907 North Lincoln Avenue in the R5 medium-high multiple-family residential zoning district. We have a staff report.
Yes, and I have a presentation, but can I share my screen? I'm currently locked out of that.
You should be able to now, Cat.
Thanks. All right.
Success.
So I have a presentation on case 2020-major-04 for the major variance at 907 North Lincoln Avenue. And Stowe Real Estate Holdings LLC requests a major variance to allow two commercial wall signs in a zoning district that does not allow commercial wall signs at 907 North Lincoln Avenue in the R5 medium-high density, multiple-family residential zoning district. I believe the applicants are here, so they'll be able to answer any questions you may have after the presentation. So the applicant seek a variance to allow two commercial wall signs to be installed at 907 North Lincoln Avenue. The parcel is roughly 2.6 acres. It was formerly occupied by a senior care center that closed in 2011. 907 North Lincoln Avenue is located on the west side of Lincoln Avenue between Fair Lawn Avenue and King Park. The site is currently vacant. A special use permit has been approved for the plasma, for a plasma facility to be built and operated at this site. This is a zoning map of the parcel and the surrounding properties. The site is zoned R5 medium-density, multiple-family residential. Nearby are two area hospitals, apartment buildings, single and two-family residences, and businesses along university and Lincoln avenues. Medical clinics are allowed in the R5 zoning district with a special use permit, but wall signs are not allowed. A major variance is required to allow two commercial wall signs to be installed on the plasma facility building. On December 2nd, 2019, city council unanimously approved a special use permit for a medical clinic at this location with the condition that a landscape plan be permitted, meeting all landscape and screening requirements. On January 27th, 2020, city council unanimously approved a major variance for a freestanding sign at this location with the condition the owner dedicates right-of-way along the west side of Lincoln Avenue and that the freestanding sign generally conforms to the sign plan and is set back at least eight feet from the property line. The applicant is now seeking a major variance to allow two commercial wall signs to be installed on the plasma facility building. Without the variance, the plasma facility could still be built and operated at this location with a freestanding sign on Lincoln Avenue. So here are the sign plans for the building. The signs will be put on the east and south entrance or walls of the building face. The wall sign on the east face will be 99.8 square feet, which is 7.5% of the wall area. And the wall sign on the south wall will be 20.6 square feet, 1% of the total wall area. Both signs will be internally illuminated and subject to the submitted after-hours lighting plan. And both signs comply with the standards for wall signs in business, industrial, MIC, CCD, and CRE zoning districts. To summarize, staff found that the case meets all the requirements for a major variance. Medical clinics are permitted in the R5 zoning district with a special use permit, but there are no sign allowances for non-residential or non-institutional uses in the business, in the district. Here's a more close-up visual of the proposed signs. The approved special use permit permits a plasma facility to operate at this location and allowing the applicant to install two commercial wall signs would be consistent with the medical uses in other zoning districts. The applicant did not deliberately create the situation. The situation was created by not, or by inconsistency in the zoning ordinance, which allows for non-residential and non-institutional uses in the R5 zoning district, but does not allow those used in steps signs. This is a rendering of what the wall signs will look like. The variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood as the commercial wall signs will be consistent with other nearby commercial uses. The area of Lincoln Avenue is characterized by single-family, multi-family residences, parks, medical uses, and commercial business uses. Many of the surrounding properties have multi-family identification signs, wall signs, and freestanding signs. The applicant will be required to screen the south property and west property lines with appropriate fencing and landscaping. The variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property because the facility will comply with all landscape and screening requirements for non-residential uses adjacent to residential uses. The variance generally represents the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance as it will allow for two commercial wall signs, one on the south side of the building and one on the west side of the building. The proposed wall signs are within regulations for wall signs in non-residential districts. The zoning board of appeals has the following options. Forward the major variance request to city council with the recommendation to approve the variance as requested based on the findings outlined in this memo. Forward the major variance to city council with the recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions or deny the major variance request, and if so, articulate findings supporting the denial. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals recommend approval of major variance to city council under the condition the wall signs generally conform to the sign plan and exhibit C. And I can take any questions now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none. Is the applicant or representative of the applicant present?
Yes, it looks like Scott Stowe and both Matt Deering are present.
Does the applicant or representative desire to be heard?
I'm going to unmute Matt Deering here and also unmute Scott Stowe. And then they should be able to unmute themselves on their end to speak.
This is Matt Deering. Good evening. How is everyone?
Hold on. Mr. Deering, do you desire to be heard?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I have to swear you in.
I'm ready.
Do you swear that any testimony you give before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes, I do.
All right, you may proceed, sir.
Good evening. Again, my name is Matt Deering. I'm with Meyer Capel Law Office. I am the legal representative for the applicant. Don't really have any further presentation, but certainly making myself available for any questions. And then I would also suggest that we swear in Scott Stowe, who is here on behalf of the applicant developer. And he probably has more specific development-related information that you all might be interested in. But in the interest of time, we're not going to waste with a larger presentation. We appreciate the staff's time and we'll just make ourselves available to your questions.
All right, is it Stowe or Stowe?
It's Stowe.
Mr. Stowe, if you desire to be heard, I need to swear you in.
Yes, sir.
Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give before this board will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
I do.
Thank you. Do either of you have anything to say prior to any questions that may be posed to you?
Well, thank you to Ms. Trotter for the staff recommendation. It was very thorough analysis and we appreciate your time.
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Does any member of the board have questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative? Hearing none. We thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no additional questions for staff, I believe we're ready for the, for the question here. Does anyone have any additional questions for staff? All right, do we have a motion then? Go ahead, Charles.
I move that the zoning board of appeals approves ZBA case was a dash 2020-major-04 and forward it to the city council with the following conditions. Number one, that the sign generally conformed to the site plans in exhibit C.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Then I believe we're ready for a vote. This to be forwarded on must be approved, I believe, by four out of the six. Is that correct, Kevin?
That's correct.
All right. We have a roll, can we have a roll call, please?
We can, yes. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
Ms. Yuckman?
Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes, that motion.
Ms. Chester, sorry, I have to go out of order.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne?
Yes.
Yes, all right. That motion, excuse me, yes, that motion has been approved by the necessary vote to be forwarded on to the city council at what meeting, Kevin?
Cat, what meeting is that going?
That will go on September 28th.
Thank you.
To the city council September 28th meeting. Thank you, Mr. Deering and Mr. Stowe. At this time, then, I would call for hearing ZBA 2020-minimum-01. A request by Stowe Law on behalf of Jonathan Rudin for a minor variance to reduce the minimum required street frontage from 30 feet to 26 feet to allow for a common lot-line subdivision at 3110 Chatham Drive in the R4 medium-density, multiple-family residential zoning district. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Can you guys hear me? I'm not muted, right?
Go ahead, I believe we can all hear you.
Right. Stowe Law, Jonathan Rudin, request a minor variance to reduce the minimum required street frontage from 30 feet to 26 feet to allow for a common lot-line subdivision at 3110 Chatham Drive. The applicants have tuned in remotely to answer any questions as well. The applicant seek a variance to reduce the minimum required street frontage from 30 feet to 26 feet to allow a common lot-line subdivision at 3110 Chatham Drive. 3110 Chatham Drive is located south of Windsor Road, east of Philo Road, in the Deerfield Trail subdivision. There's an existing attached duplex on the locks, on the lot. The parcel is roughly 0.26 acres. At the street frontage, the lot is 59.27 feet wide. At the rear lot line, the lot is 110 feet wide. The subject property sits along the curve on Chatham Drive, causing the lot to be more narrow at the street frontage and wider at the rear lot line. A minor variance is required to reduce the minimum street frontage from 30 feet to 26 feet. The subdivided lots would meet the minimum lot area, however, they would be slightly more narrow than what is allowed. Here's the zoning map. The site is zoned R4 medium-density, multiple-family residential. The parcels surrounding 3110 Chatham Drive are zoned R4 to the north, south, and west, and R2 to the east. Nearby are other attached duplexes, many that have been subdivided into common lot-line subdivisions and some single-family homes. Attached duplexes are allowed by right in the R4 zoning district and common lot-line subdivisions are allowed by right in the R4 zoning district, but they require a minimum 30 feet of street frontage. Here's a site photo of the duplex on the lot now. This photo. Yeah, the duplex has been on the property since before the applicant purchased it. The duplex meets all other development regulations for a duplex in the R4 zoning district, including FAR, OSR, and required yards. The variance would be allowed, or would allow the lot to be subdivided into two parcels, each slightly more narrow than the zoning ordinance allows. A common lot-line subdivision will allow for separate ownership of the two duplex units. Separate driveways serve each of the two units and each unit will also have separate water, electrical, and sewer lines. Without the variance, the property could not be subdivided because the parcels would not meet the minimum street frontage for a common lot-line subdivision. These are the neighboring duplexes to the west of the property and all of these lots have been subdivided into common lot-line subdivisions. This is a draft site plan for the proposed subdividing line on the property. To summarize, staff found that this case meets all the requirements for a minor variance. The configuration of the lot creates practical difficulty in meeting the minimum required street frontage because the lot fronts onto a curved street. The pie-shaped lot is more narrow along the street frontage and wider at the rear lot line. The proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege because the lot was planted to be 59.27 feet wide at this location. Attached duplex residences and common lot-line dwellings are allowed by right in the R4 zoning district and the applicant was unaware of the minimum 30-foot street frontage requirement when the property was purchased. The attached duplex on the lot is one of several attached duplex residences on Chatham Drive. Many of the neighboring duplexes have been subdivided into common lot-line subdivisions. Approving the variance to allow for a common lot-line subdivision at this location will be consistent with the essential character of the existing neighborhood. The variance will not allow for any change in use or any new development on the lot. The duplex will continue to operate as it has since it was built, where it has not been a nuisance to the neighborhood. The variance would just allow for the duplex units to be separately owned. The variance request is for a reduction in the required minimum street frontage from 30 feet to 26 feet, which is less than a 15% reduction in the requirement. The applicant has requested a four-foot reduction in the required street frontage to accommodate for any surveyors there in measurement. The lot could be equally subdivided into two 29.64-foot wide parcels, which would be less than half a foot narrower than required, but the subdivision would still require a minor variance. Approving the variance request to allow a reduction in the required, in the minimum required street frontage from 30 feet to 24 feet would account for any surveyors there in measurement and the parcel would be divided down the middle. The zoning board of appeals has the following options for this case. Approve the variance as requested. Approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, and if so, articulate all terms, conditions, and findings or deny the major, or the minor variance, and if so, articulate supportings of the denial. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals approve a minor variance under the condition that the subdivision generally conforms to the site plan in exhibit C. And I can take any questions you have now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none. Does the applicant or representative of the applicant present?
I believe Jonathan Rudin is in the waiting room.
Of the city building?
No, just in this Zoom session, I just promoted him to a panelist, so he should be able to unmute himself. So John, if you look to your lower left-hand corner, you can unmute your microphone.
Hello. Well, thanks for reviewing my request and for all your work.
Mr. Rudin, do you have anything that you want to say to the board in regards to this application? So I have to swear you in.
Yes.
All right. Please raise your right hand. You swear that any testimony you give before this board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for reviewing my request and for all your work. I'm here to answer any questions you may have for me.
Go ahead, Nancy, but you have to unmute.
I have to unmute myself?
You are now.
Okay. What is the advantage to having the common lot-line division here to the owners?
Yeah, we would like separate utility and tax bills and would really like to have the option to sell the duplex off by unit.
So right now, I always thought duplexes were separately owned, but this is commonly owned? I'm just trying to understand this.
Yep, so the, I own the entire duplex and it is one parcel. And I want to split it into two parcel ID numbers and to sell two units out of my one.
Did everybody hear that? Because I was having trouble hearing his answer.
Yeah, Mr. Rudin, could you turn your video off? We find that sometimes will help with getting the audio in. So, sorry, sorry, could you repeat your answer?
Sure. So I have one parcel ID number right now. And if I had two parcel ID numbers, if the duplex was split into two units, I could have separate utility bills, separate tax bills, and eventually I could sell the units off separately.
Okay, thank you. That was very clear.
And right now, if you were to sell, you would have to sell it together, correct?
That's right. That's how I bought it.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Rudin?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you get two, do you have just one utility bill or two?
Well, I have two water bills, two electric bills currently, and I just had work done to have two sewer bills. So all my utilities will be separate, are separate now.
So your electric and your gas are separate, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Mr. Rudin? All right, hearing none. Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
No question, no question.
All right. I didn't do this last time, Kevin, but is there anyone else present in wanting to speak in favor or against this?
No, the only other person here is the UPTV camera operator, and I don't think Jason wants to weigh in.
And that would have been consistent with the last case as well? There was nobody else?
That's correct.
All right. Okay, then I believe we are ready to call this question for motion.
I move that the zoning board of appeals approves the minor variance in case ZBA-2020-MIN-01 as requested based on the findings outlined in the memo.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Are there any further questions or discussions? I believe we're ready for roll call.
Hey, Mr. Warmbrun?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roche?
Yes.
And Ms. Yuckman?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rudin.
Thank you.
I believe that takes care of our cases. We're now on to old business, which according to the agenda is a review of the annual bylaws. Do you have something to say about this, Kevin?
I do, yeah. Give me just a second while I save the other file that I was looking at. So let me, I need to pull up some notes. So you'll recall, back in February, we initially discussed the bylaws and and it was, it was requested at that time. So the board had several things that they discussed, but there was one outstanding issue. Sorry, I have a baby crawling back behind me somewhere. There was, there was one outstanding issue that I was going to ask our legal division about, which I did. And then I'll just summarize the issue. So we were talking about, about allowing remote attendance at, for ZBA meetings. Of course, this was pre-COVID. So this is your standard non-pandemic zoning board of appeals meetings. We would allow remote attendance if there were already a physical quorum presence. And it was suggested that so if there were cases, say, where we had opened a public hearing, but we didn't have a quorum present, and then the board was to vote on the, on a case at the next meeting, it was suggested to add something to the bylaws that would require the members that were absent. It was suggested to add something to the bylaws that would require the, the members that were absent to review a video of that meeting. Rather than just reading the minutes, since reviewing the video would give a much more thorough understanding of everything that was discussed. I learned from Kurt Borman in our legal division that the zoning board of appeals should not undertake any business without a quorum present. So that includes even opening a public hearing. So sort of that hypothetical situation where somebody might not be present at an initial public hearing where there wasn't a quorum couldn't happen because we can't open a hearing without a quorum, which was, to be honest, that was news to me. So I, I don't think we would need to add anything to the bylaws that would require a board member to review the video because there wouldn't have been the public hearing open in any case. I, I think that was the only outstanding issue that we, that we had discussed at that time. Sorry, Mr. Roche?
Oh, yeah. So Kevin, so what you're saying is the next time we have a meeting where we have insufficient members for a quorum, we just break and go home because we won't be having anything happen?
Yep, even if somebody flew in from Texas as the applicant, so. Yes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Any, any one else have any questions for staff? Go ahead, Charles.
So are we going to leave this bylaw discussion for later? Because initially we started to do this to see if we could call in, correct?
We did. Yeah, and I, I think that reviewing, in reviewing the minutes, it, it seemed like there was a consensus that allowing remote attendance would be fine. There was, I know this was back in February, but there was some back and forth. But I think, I think the only outstanding issue was that issue of, of reviewing the video. But as I said, that wouldn't be required. We, we could, I mean, I could send out the, the updated bylaws and we could review them prior to our next meeting. They would be, essentially they'd be the same as the bylaws as presented back in February. But since it's been a while and we haven't all looked at them for, for a while, I could send that out again before we actually vote on them. It's, I, I don't think anybody's in a rush to get these passed since the, you know, since I don't know that we're going to be coming back in person anytime soon. Anyway.
So we do need, oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So we are voting on something. It's not just. So we reviewed the bylaws and we were talking about potential changes, but it sounds like we're not really making any changes, but we still need to vote on like affirming that they're still valid or something.
Well, so, so we would be voting on the changes and the, and those were outlined back in February, but I didn't send, send those out again before this meeting. So I, I just suggest that prior to the next meeting, we, I, I'll send those out and then we can, you know, they'll be the same as the ones we reviewed in February. But I don't want to vote on anything that people haven't looked at since February. But I did want to talk to our legal division and get some clarification on this before this meeting.
Got it.
Yes, Charles.
So what we're saying here, how hard is it to set up a Zoom meeting now that we're doing this? The only reason we can, because the governor made an executive order to do this, right?
Right.
Our bylaws wouldn't let us do this without that executive order, correct?
Right, yeah. And the, and the changes to the bylaws that we were discussing back in February were just where you would still need a physical quorum present at the meeting, but it would allow people for, there was a small list of reasons to call in, like you couldn't be in Tahiti and just decide, hey, I want to come to the zoning board of appeals meeting. And so you'd have to, there were, there were a couple of reasons, I think out of town on business or if there was a sickness, either you or somebody in your family. But that, that remote attendance is totally separate from obviously what we're doing these days.
Well, what I'm saying is this, is this a lot better than a telephone? I mean, are you able to set up a Zoom meeting for a person as opposed to a telephone call?
Um, I guess I'd defer to our UPTV camera operator to, I, I think it's, I think they do these things enough that it's probably, it's probably pretty easy for them to set up either one. You're correct in that, Kevin. We can, we can do a phone call or a, or a Zoom session.
So should Zoom be included in the language that we were talking? I don't think it was prior in February.
I think it was more general. I think it said video conference or something like that, because I don't think anybody knew what Zoom was back then.
Okay, I didn't remember the video conferencing. I just thought it was just a phone, phone in, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I remember it was a good, it was a good discussion. And just in reviewing the minutes, I was brought back to it. You can always review the video as well. But yeah, we, we did talk about just telephone, also video, video conferencing or video calling, whatever we called it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions about bylaw issues for staff? I agree with your proposal, Kevin, that you put something in writing for us to review prior to the next meeting before we try to vote on anything. Does any, any member of the board object to that? All right, hearing none, then that's what we'll do. We're now into new business. Is there any new business that the board needs to be made aware of?
No, there is not.
We have no audience, so is there a staff report?
No, I don't believe so.
All right, study session?
No study session.
Then we're down to item 12 adjournment. Does anybody object to adjournment? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending.